Students remain standing for moment. The stylus with Kathleen Heaney, former Clinton Elementary School teacher, John D., brother Teresa Fitzgerald, the teacher of Clinton Elementary School. Thank you. Open tonight's Clinton School Committee meeting for Monday, November 6, 2023. I have a motion to approve the dose.
Mr. Chairman?
Discussion. None in favor. I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 16, 2023. Some in favor? Discussion. None in favor. Turn it over to Dr. Meyer for some celebrations.
All right, so as we like to do, we'd like to recognize students and staff from each of the buildings. So, boys with our staff and students from the high school.
Give me everyone. We have a staff member and a student both nominated for this month. And our staff member couldn't be here tonight. It is Ms. Smith-Porter, she was nominated by a student, and I just want to read the nomination. Ms. Smith-Porter is always so nice and kind in class, and will listen to what we have to say during a lesson. If one of us is having trouble understanding, she will take the time to stop and listen to our questions and re-explain. I believe Ms. Smith-Porter is a great teacher of laws, deserves recognition for this. Like I said, she couldn't be here tonight, but got her anyway. Our student that was nominated by a staff member is Alex Walwinski. Alex, you're up. Look, I just want to read this recognition. This is from a staff member. Alex spent three weeks of his summer volunteering to set up computer lab tech. He has continued to support the computers and students since the beginning of the year. He stays after it and makes himself available at every instance someone needs computer help. This kindness is also extended to robotics, where he volunteers endless hours. Hours he does not need for any reason, since he already has fulfilled his pay check requirement. He is kind, thoughtful, and willing to help anyone in need. I can't think of anyone more deserving of this honor. Alex.
And now for the middle school.
Okay, we have a staff member and a student to recognize today, this evening. So we will start with Melissa Machado, who has been selected as the Staff Member of the Month at Clinton Middle School. So Melissa's unwavering commitment to our students and staff has truly set her apart. In her role as an instructional assistant at CMS, Melissa exemplifies kindness, patience, and an incredible dedication to supporting our students. She consistently goes above and beyond to ensure that the individual needs of our students are met. Her caring and attentive approach not only benefits our students, but also leads a positive impact on our entire staff. Melissa's radiant positivity and kindness create an atmosphere of warmth and inclusion at CMS. Her contributions to our school community do not go unnoticed, and we are grateful for the incredible work that she does every single day. Please join me in congratulating Melissa Machado for a well-deserved recognition as the CMS Staff Member of the Month.
Get your picture, yeah? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank God. Thank you. All right, next up is Chloe Senna Squisher. Chloe's nomination highlights the exceptional qualities that she brings to our school community. An eighth-grade student at CMS, her politeness, consistent willingness to help others, and her role in creating a welcoming and inclusive environment are truly commendable. The deep appreciation from our teachers for Chloe's respectful and attentive presence in the classroom speaks volumes about her character. Chloe's exceptional work ethic, her unwavering commitment to her studies, and her persistent effort in class make her a shining example for all of us to follow. Let's take a moment to congratulate Chloe for this remarkable achievement and to appreciate the positive impact that she has on CMS.
And now for the elementary school.
Our first, we have a staff and a student. We're going to start with Kathy Goffian as our staff member. Kathy was recognized by several colleagues at the elementary school. She was recognized for always being a warm and friendly face in the office. She is consistent, attentive, and helpful when needs arise. Another colleague recognized Kathy as the one that keeps our school running with a smile. No matter your question, you are always greeted with a positive and sunny demeanor. I was lucky enough to work with her in two buildings and feel lucky to have her as a coworker. Another nomination came in for Kathy intended she always has a positive attitude. She always has a smile for everyone, no matter what kind of day she has had. She works so hard in fields of million-and-one questions, but is never short or frustrated, and is always happy to help everyone in any way she can. Her kindness is always noticed and appreciated by so many of us. When we're having a bad day, we just walk by Kathy and our day is picked up. I can't imagine the office without her. Mrs. Piermarini, Ms. Noel, and Ms. Vazquez, and I couldn't agree more with these sentiments. She is also a really great baker for anyone who didn't know, and she recognizes when we're having a tough day, it's not uncommon that she gets up extra early to bake us a treat like cinnamon rolls and use it on the filing cabinet so we have a treat. So thank you, Kathy.
Congratulations.
Now we are pleased to recognize our Student of the Month, Shelby Rogers. Shelby has been nominated consistently by teachers both this year and last year. Teachers consistently recognize her for her quiet leadership in the classroom. She is always willing to help teach a friend or provide a confidence boost when another student needs it. She is an exceptional student and is helpful to teachers and students. She consistently demonstrates role model behavior in all she does. Please join us in congratulating Shelby.
All right, that's all of our, let's have one more round of applause for all of our staff and students that we recognized.
Well, congratulations, everyone. We're going to go on with the rest of the meeting. We're not going to be offended if you want to leave.
This clears out pretty quick. What do we have? Mr. Sarmak, do we have a student rep today? Do we have a student rep? Okay.
Do we have anybody here for public comment? All right, CTA. All yours, Robin.
CTA or PTA?
The ones around at eight.
You always remind me this.
Well, I think we only, you know, I just, go ahead.
We had a full day of professional development, and it was jam-packed with lots of training. One of the things that did come out of it, this year, Department of Ed is changing the IEP format that they're using, and it was very stressful the first day of school hearing about it, and we asked the teachers to wait until our PD day. There's still a lot of anxiety around it and unsure of, you know, how to navigate this whole process. So that's, that's one of the biggest things, but.
We'll keep, we'll work on it. And you and I touched base earlier today about it, too. We'll continue to talk. That's one of the beauties of being part of the early adopter process, where we've got to actually help provide feedback to create the form, is the forms aren't actually like, next year they'll require it for everything. Right now, we're piloting it with the initials and reabos to try to make it so that when it's required, hopefully, we hit the ground running. So hopefully, we can work it out.
And, and we did talk about today that when we changed from I-Pass to Infinite Campus, it was a learning curve, and everybody was really anxious. And so we're hoping that it will, it will work. We have an ed board meeting this week, and Brenda and I are meeting with Dr. Meyer next week, so. Anyway.
Thank you.
What would be a school year without new changes?
You don't have to mention it. PTA, you're up.
Hello, it's me again. We are proud to say that our Qdoba fundraiser raised eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. All that was, was people just eating and enjoying a good meal, and the PTA was able to rake in those funds. On October 26th, there was the Halloween Walk downtown. We had a table there. Families actually started showing up at five, so we started handing things out at five o'clock. By "we," I mean me. I was Miss Frizzle. And we gave out over a thousand things and had to shut down at seven because we ran out. Yeah. So we've already started prepping our A-game for next year and plan to have 2,000 things. That is not a challenge to see 2,000 kids. I did not have a voice by the end of that two-hour period. Our first catalog fundraiser is at CES right now. It has kicked off, and it's just in time for holiday delivery. We are currently over 6,000 in sales. We are at, we're not quite at 50% registration, so elementary school parents, get those kids registered and share away. We have been working with Scholastics. We have a book fair set up for the middle school from December 4th to December 6th, which on December 6th will be an evening event where we will have the book fair, there'll be conferences, and the PTA will be putting on dinner. So there'll be pizza, snacks, and drinks in the CAF, so that they'll be a one-stop-shop for parents. And then we are lucky enough to be able to say you can buy your tickets for the Lancaster Celebration of Lights using the link that we are sharing from our PTA page all throughout the Facebook world. And by doing so and using the link, we actually get $2 for every ticket sold. They chose us as one of the foundations charities or PTAs to be able to accept that. We were able to get it voted at our meeting this past, last week, that we are donating a 90s-themed basket to the After Prom 2025 Musical Bingo event that is on November 18th at Turner Hall to help support that class. And our next meeting is December 14th at 6:15. Please note, there is a change. We are not meeting the first Thursday because that is the beginning of Hanukkah. And that's it.
Thank you.
From CPAC.
All right, we have a few special presentations. The first three here are all regarding student travel. As you know, out-of-state student travel, according to the policy, needs to be approved. These are always just kind of like gray area trips where, I mean, they are basically associated with the school, but they're really sort of like the, they're not, they're like spring break-type trips or April vacation or February vacation trips. But before we do any fundraising for them, we want to get at least a tentative approval for them to move forward, and we can always come back for more information on specific details prior to the trip. We just wanted to make sure to get a blessing for them to go ahead and start getting kids signed up and paying. So I think for the first one, we have Mr. Francois coming up. And he's hoping to do a band trip to Disney, I believe, correct? Yep, you had, you had to see him.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, this trip is for the music department, band included. We are planning to travel February break of 2025. This includes the marching band, concert choir, concert band, and of course, our newly reformed color guard unit that's going to march with the marching band. It's a four-night, five-day trip, and I think it's a great opportunity for our students to perform and a great recruitment tool to help build our program here in Clinton, Clinton Public Schools.
You do have an itinerary in your packet, at least a sample itinerary, the proposal itinerary, and you are running it through a, you're working through a company. It's not an independent, you're not like piecing it together yourself.
No, this is through a company, Music Travel.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
So, so there would be probably the standard protections that there normally is for these student travel things that a company would offer.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, that's pretty much it. You have any questions?
Just the high points.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, because Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the band trip to Orlando in February 2025.
I second the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Enjoy it.
Thank you.
And we'll probably have you come and give us an update shortly before the trip, just finalize like numbers and chaperones and that kind of stuff.
Of course.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we have a similar one, April of 2025, heading to Paris and Madrid. I think Mr. Duggan is here for that one. This one's a little more standard. It's the EF Tours ones that we've been typically running. I think we had to cancel one with COVID, and then we kind of ran one this year, I think, sort of last minute, and were trying to get a little more into the providing people with ample notice of these trips. If I believe that's correct.
That is absolutely correct. So this is a proposal for April of 2025 during the April break. It's an eight-day trip, three days in Madrid, and then a flight to Paris, three days in Paris. We see it as a terrific opportunity for our language students. We now have a pretty well-established French program, as well as our Spanish classes. And so in previous years, the last time I traveled as a chaperone for one of these trips, it was just to Spain because we really didn't have much of a French program, so we're trying to build that up and offer these trips to both Spanish students and French students. We offer them to any student who, by the time of the trip, has finished either French or Spanish II, figuring that that gives them at least a little bit of an opportunity and a little bit of background to be able to use their, use their, their language skills. It is through EF Tours. It's who we have traveled with before several times, and we are trying very hard to get back on, as Dr. Meyer said, a, almost like a bit of a schedule. Every other year, a language trip, every other year, a more sort of widely, widely accepted or widely.
Open to general.
Thank you very much.
Students just, different experience.
Yeah, exactly. And so that's what we're trying to do, and this is for April of 2025. I did send this along. I assume this is in your packets as well? So I don't know if there are any questions or concerns on any of that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the language department to move forward with the trip to Paris and Madrid in April 2025.
I will second that motion.
Questions or concerns? All in favor?
All right, perfect.
Thank you all so much.
And one more. Like we mentioned, we're trying to get on the schedule of giving the students time to plan, so this will be for April 2026 to Italy and Greece, and I think Mr. Zapantis is spearheading this trip.
All right, thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Mr. Zapantis. I went on an EF trip with Clinton High in 2017 under Ed Howard, and knowing he was retiring, you know, he kind of showed me the ropes. I planned one for this spring. We're heading to Europe, and I'd like to give families enough time to plan for our next trip to Italy and Greece, so.
It's the same, it's EF Tours.
Yeah, EF Tours.
The only difference is, like you mentioned, was that the, Mr. Duggan mentioned, is while the Spain, sorry, the Paris and Madrid trip is really geared towards those students who have successfully played the language and given an opportunity to use the language, this one is more of just a, like a cultural experience. It's open to anyone who chooses to sign up.
Yep, juniors and seniors, so class of 25 and 26 will be welcome on this one, and we just ask that they're in good standing disciplinary-wise and in history classes.
26 and 27?
Class of 26 and 25 will be, I mean, 26 and 27, sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, the trip to Italy and Greece for the purposes of planning in, during April break of 2026.
I will second that.
Any further discussion, questions?
Thank you very much.
And thank you all, by the way, for providing these opportunities for kids. I know that it's, it's, it's a heavy lift to put them together and spend that time away from your families so that our children can have these experiences, these important formative experiences, so thank you. Best wishes with them.
And then we have one more presentation tonight. Actually, when I was at the recent Clinton Chamber event, I ran into Gregory Barros, who would like to talk to us a little bit about the Fuller Field Vintage Baseball Invitational.
Top of the evening to you.
Good evening.
I'm going to talk about the event coming up, tentatively scheduled for August 2024. It's called the Fuller Field Vintage Baseball Exhibition. I'm sorry. Invitational. First time we visit vintage baseball in Clinton since 2006. The last time we had the event, I wasn't part of, I did participate as a spectator at that time. And the reason why I'm bringing it up now, first of all, you're familiar with vintage baseball, I'm assuming, or you're not? If you're not, it's just baseball as we experienced it between the years 1850 and 1910, culturally as well as athletically and entertainment-wise. I do want to talk about a special opportunity that I see in particular, of particular interest to the school committee, I hope, as well. And that is a law that I only recently discovered called Chapter 296 of the Acts of 2018. The reason why I mention that is, of course, I believe, the opportunity enhancement that our event, our vintage baseball event presents for schoolchildren, K through 12. That has to do with civic engagement, according to the General Court in Massachusetts, and I believe this will be an opportunity because part of my program for Fuller Field includes registration in 20, by 2006, in the National Register of Historical Places as a national historic site. So you can imagine teachers, administrators, and students, K through 12, having an opportunity to get a piece of that action, all having to do with Fuller Field, by the way, the oldest continuously operated baseball park in the world. As well, we'll be celebrating the return of vintage baseball, and I want to recommend, I want to mention a few of the things that I'm doing in terms of planning. First, a special interest group called Crankcase. If you're not familiar with vintage baseball, then you may not know that fans of vintage baseball are called cranks, hence Crankcase. Second of all, I'm getting assistance planning-wise from participants in the 2006 event, including, excuse me, Terry Ngano from the Historical Society, as well as Jake Newcomb with the Dirigo Baseball Club from Augusta, Maine, and Brian Sheehy with the Lowell Nine, as well as the Essex Baseball Association, another vintage baseball group. They, having participated in 2006, have expressed interest and are assisting me now in planning for the event in 2024. I do need to mention and emphasize that the date I have mentioned in passing inadvertently, pardon me, is only tentative pending the approval of our Fuller Field Commission, as well as their acceptance of my reservation. So it remains tentative, but we expect to have it at some date and probably on the 25th, pretty much the anniversary, the 14th anniversary of that event. As well, I can answer any questions if you have, too. I'm speaking to the Fuller Field Commission on Wednesday evening, as a matter of fact. I shall now present, present my petition to them to accept my reservation for the field for 8/25, Sunday, 8/25, 2024. If you have any questions, I can field those as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming our role here is this, is to listen.
Yes.
Informational that.
Is informational.
We wouldn't have any direct role in, in this at this point.
Besides your goodwill note.
And I think you can share, you know, as we get close to that date.
Yes, I will keep you apprised.
Reach out, and we can try to figure out, you know, is there a way that potentially our, our baseball or softball athletes want to be involved in some way? Is there a way, like you mentioned, sort of the tie to potentially like a civics project, those types of things?
Yes.
So I think, you know, I think it's great to recognize the history of Fuller Field.
Absolutely.
And if we can just sort of keep us in mind as you go through this process, and we'll just see where we can maybe, you know, help make that a special event.
Absolutely, and I appreciate your cooperation as well. Anything else?
So is it, I'm, I'm sorry, is it a baseball tournament? Is it a game?
Well, this, this event will be, and I plan to make it annual, as a matter of fact, as well, kind of in perpetuity, but this event will be more like an exhibition. There'll be some games going on, but they aren't league games, maybe some barnstorming as well as demonstrations and illustrations, because different teams play by different rules, as a matter of fact, too. So when there is a tournament, when there is an exhibition, there has to be an agreement on a set of rules that the, the teams will follow, pardon me, will follow. Plus, there will be other opportunities for entrepreneurs having to do with merchandising as well as, well, you name it, why not, right? The only requirement, and it's open to everybody, is that everybody wants to have a good time, everybody wants to play. Everybody wants to get a piece of the action. It's the only requirement.
Wish you the best with it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, two quick staffing updates. Stacey O'Connor has joined Clinton Elementary School as an ABAIA as a new hire, and we actually have, it's technically a transfer, is Julie Natero, who's currently the school year administrative assistant at Clinton Middle School. assistant at Clinton Middle School. She'll be moving to Clinton High School to take the full-year position that, basically replacing Ms. Swetland when she retires. So she'll be moving over shortly after Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving break, so we can try to get a little bit of training overlap before her official retirement date. So we have some financial updates for you. It looks like a lot, but we'll probably get to them pretty quickly. It's more just the transparency of including the things, not a whole lot to talk about. But Annette is here, our business manager, if you want to come on up. Annette Cologne.
Hi.
Annette's in her first official year under this role, and I think she's doing a great job.
Agreed.
And you can see in here, there are the, some, I put in a, like, a couple pages of the, of the end-of-year report. So you see all these columns here that say the end-of-year report. That's just trying to get the summary reports tab, all the tabs that you have to fill in to actually calculate all of these things.
Massive.
That Annette works on and works on with the town and with Amanda and, and getting all those figures in. So the, you know, overall, from my takeaway, we seem to meet all of our minimum spendings for everything and our maintenance of efforts, so I didn't see any issues with the end-of-year report. I don't know, Annette, if there's any other things you want to call their attention to or?
No. This year, we did pretty well. We worked together with the town accountant, matching our accounts, and especially on grants. Those are kind of difficult in a sense, but we matched them, and we were very confident with the results. So we ended up submitting the report soon, sooner than later.
Yeah.
Like other years, but we were very happy with the results, and we're just waiting now for the response from DESI, and we are also waiting for the audit coming up in January, in February, so that will be the decisive, because it's based on the, their independent audit, so they will take a look at everything and tell us if we did well.
Okay. And then, speaking of audits, we did just have, there's nothing in your packet on this one, we did just have a FY23 Circuit Breaker Audit, while we're still living in, last year.
Yes.
If you remember, a few meetings ago, I told you that we had been notified, we were selected, and I know that Loretta and Annette kind of got together and worked with everyone, Cindy and Patty and Amanda and.
We had a good team.
Yeah, to really try to go through, Robin, I think, did a lot with that, too, to try to go through and really get, make sure we had all of the backup documentation necessary for our Circuit Breaker claim. So just to put it, you know, last year, our claim for reimbursement was $1.2 million. They reviewed all of our facts, all of our backup material, and they did let us know that they are going to reduce our claim by 17,000 or something.
About 17.
Which is almost, compared to 1.2 million, that's pretty darn accurate. And almost all of that was because of.
Transportation.
Transportation, which is a new area that you can start claiming. So there's just a few things that we need to tighten up as far as, I know a lot of it had to do with sort of like student attendance, first the days they are, we're claiming transportation, those types of things. So I was very pleased with it. I think that, as I said, if anything, it was more of just a learning, a little bit of learning experience for us with the transportation piece, which is new, but everything else seemed to check out really well.
Yeah, overall, it was a very good audit compared to what we were expecting, so 17,000 in that line is not that.
No, no. Well done. And then we have our FY24 first quarter update. So I know that, you know, Amanda works with Maryland to try to make sure that we're getting, looking at salaries and encumbrances, and also with, you know, Annette and Amanda do a lot with the purchases and the other expenses. And so this is sort of where we are right now with our budget, year-to-date expenses and our encumbrances. So it's, you know, overall, it seems like we're in pretty good shape. Most lines, if you look at, you know, if you see something that's really over, there's usually a story in there. For example, CES, Special Education Teachers, is, is projected to be over by almost $90,000. Well, that's because we had budgeted a, that teacher, what is now a preschool teacher, had been budgeted in a different line last year because we weren't sure where that person was going to be, so now that salary is in the correct spot. So, you know, there's some things like that as we go through. We might want to try to clean up with some transfers here and there, but when you look at the bottom line, we're in pretty good shape. And even looking at the grants, trying to make sure that we're okay as far as how we're spending, you know, what we're spending in SR3 and School Choice and those types of things. If we have a chance, you know, one of the things we might look to do is recode some of our people that are in School Choice right now into SR3 to make sure that we spend down the SR3, and then School Choice, that would keep our School Choice balance up that we could use for next fiscal year to help absorb the loss of the SR3 funds. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to highlight in that?
No. The year-to-day expenses, if you look at it, those are actual and reconciled with the town, so both our general ledgers are accurate. So those are like what, what it is. Encumbrances are, it's a working process, as Dr. Meyer said. As we move along, we move things around, but we will explain those on the next report.
Encumbrances get a little better every, every quarter.
Every quarter, yeah.
All right. And then I think the last financial update here is the Student Activity Accounts.
Yes.
This is something that the auditors had told us a while ago, that we need to get approved every year, and we have been, and this, this year, we haven't got to it yet. So we just have these lists of Student Activity Accounts, just for the middle school and the high school.
Yeah.
And I think these are pretty standard.
Yeah, the active sub-accounts for the year.
So this is the only, we probably need a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I approve, I, I move that we approve the Student Activity Accounts for.
FY24.
FY24.
I will second that.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
All right. Oh, and then the last thing under budget is you do have our budget timeline. I said, this is, it's nice that the end-of-year report was done early this year, because I feel like this is always that time of year where I'm living in three fiscal years, because we're still looking at FY23, we're trying to live in FY24 and plan FY25.
Yes.
So it's nice to sort of have FY23 in the rearview, but FY25 starts soon. So at the end of this week, I think I actually already, I know I already wrote it and did a schedule send, that staff will be getting the staffing and salary projection forms that we ask them to do every year on Thursday, and, and then that'll sort of kick off the process, and then we'll start with an admin meeting the Monday right after Thanksgiving to really start just kind of going through everything with ultimately our goal of draft preliminary budget publicly presented January 22nd at the tri-council, and then we will go from there. So we will have a few, you know, we will have the school committee meeting in December. We'll also have, I think there's one in there, I think there's one in, I don't remember if there's one in January, I think there might be one in January before the tri-council, so we'll have to double-check on that. But it's also one of those things that, you know, if school committee has specific input on anything that they would like to see included in the budget, they could also share that at one of those meetings, too, so that we can try to at least get a placeholder in there for the preliminary, and then we can kind of see how things go.
Yeah.
Comes up quick.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have to tell you.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's all we have for financial stuff, unless anyone has any questions for Annette.
Thank you for all of your good work.
Thank you.
The level of detail is impressive, and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you so much.
Jan, I understand we have some late-breaking news?
Field hockey, 131.
Oh, nice.
Gales Field Hockey moving on. That's great. Thank you.
For them.
Guess I don't get to go watch it now, do I? I was recording.
All right. Couple of things in here, there's just some updates. As Ms. Quist has mentioned, when heard about, we did have the professional update on the 27th. It just kind of included the basic agenda in there, just so you could see. We did have a lot going on, whether it was Commonwealth Consulting, or Loody Math Consulting, or Apple Seeds. We had a lot of, a lot of different trainings going on, including the, the new IEP as well. We also had an opportunity for our health and wellness teachers to meet, to really start digging into the new standards as well, you know, a protocol for them to follow, to kind of look at what's in those new standards, first what they're doing now. The MASs, MASC joint conference is coming up later this week, so the agenda is in here. I know that I'm attending. I believe Loretta is attending, Mr. Baracus is attending, and I think Kelly's coming down for the, which is, what's it called? COSCAF. It's the school committee, it's basically for school committee secretaries. So she'll be going to that training on Thursday. So if there's anything in here that you guys, that anyone is really interested in, you can probably let Matt or I know. We could try to make sure that between Matt, Loretta, and I, if someone tries to attend those sessions, otherwise, normally, we try to pick sort of a cross-section so we can, we can get everything in there. So community engagement, we just, you know, put that one in there, obviously, there's a celebrations one tonight, doing those. But one of the things that we wanted to look at was specifically, if you look behind the sort of the strategic plan page, it talks about the DESE Better Together Conference. So on October 26th, our Family Outreach Centers, so our family liaisons, along with some ESL teachers from Clinton Elementary and Middle School, and some parents of special education students, attended the Family and School Engagement Better Together Event hosted by the DESE. So this is sort of a summit or initiative that the DESE is trying to work on, and we are sending our team, that does include staff and parents, to try to make sure that we are staying up to date on how to, you know, build that community partnership. What I have, oh, next one I have is chronic absenteeism. So I wanted to highlight this. The commissioner had a phone call with all the superintendents probably two weeks ago now, talking about how chronic absenteeism in the state is basically a crisis, and that the DESE is going to be putting money out, some grants, to try to help school districts basically get kids to come back to school. And when I'm listening to this, to me, it was, I was kind of, I was a little surprised, and when I looked at our data, all of our schools, you know, our data is, we've, we're, we're better than, our 2023 data was better than our 2019 data significantly. So if you look at the state, I mean, the state's range, state's chronic absentee rates of kids that missed more than 10% of days are enrolled in 2019 was 12.9. We were probably, if you average ours out, well, we were a little higher, right? As a district, we were 13.5. But we were kind of in the ballpark of the state. In 2023, the state's average had jumped to 22.2, which is why it's called in a crisis. Ours as a district was down to 6.7. And, and the reason that, you know, I think a big, a big part of that is our administrators, our guidance counselors, our student support teams in the buildings, you know, we talked about this. When we were coming back and schools coming back normal, the very first thing we said was, you know, we can't teach kids that aren't here, right? So we wanted to make sure that we were, it was one of our goals, right, was to try to get our chronic absenteeism below our 2019 level, and we did. So I think it's a, it's a tremendous credit to, to our building-based administration and their guidance and support teams, and our teachers, that just, you know, that our, we make our space a place that our students want to come, when there's a lot of schools across the state that are struggling with that right now, just getting kids back to school. I did include the memo from the commissioner on his update on chronic absenteeism, and, you know, I just wanted to at least brief you on that, because I just want you to know, if you, if you hear about that on the news or anything like that about the, you know, the state talking about chronic absenteeism, it's really, it wasn't a problem in Clinton last year because, and I think it's because our, like I said, our, our administration and our guidance and our support teams work so hard to try to address that. So just wanted to make sure they got some credit there.
I think it's remarkable, and I think it should be celebrated that when the state has doubled over this time period, Clinton has cut these numbers in half.
Could also be David Ass's lunches.
It's probably, it's free lunch, is probably what it is.
Well, let's not exclude any possibility.
I think we got to give David Ass some credit.
No, I do know, it's, it's, we, I said, we made a, a big effort on it. It was a focus that we talked about for our goals, and I know that a lot of work was put in by our administration. Like I said, our guidance staff, our student support teams, and even, you know, our teachers have just really reached out to parents and making sure that we were getting students, students back in the building. And if students were experiencing issues, or, you know, stress or trauma, that we tried to work with them on that, to still get them back in the building. So I think it was, it was a collaborative effort, but it was a lot of work, and I'm, and I just want to see, you know, show that, you know, it's, it can be done. The middle school MSBA update, so there's a big presentation in here. Most of these, the first 16 slides are all like tiny, because they're basically all slides that you've probably seen at some point or another. But these were all part of my presentation to the Chamber, the Clinton Chamber of Commerce, when I tried to kind of fill the, the, answer the question of like, what have we done already, right? Then when it gets kind of like, what's the new part? We did share, you know, the, the cost of doing nothing, there's no free solution. Basically, the estimate right now to, to basically bring that building up to code and make it without educational improvements is over $100 million. The, and that's kind of to piecemeal it, right? That's saying, oh, we're going to do a, you know, $20 million HVAC system, and we're going to do a $5 million roof, and we're going to do, you know, go, go each that way. But the problem is, once you hit a certain amount of a dollar figure, it's going to trigger us to bring other things up to the current code. So it's, like I always say, we might not have everything, it's not that our building is not, is in like a violation right now, but it's sort of grandfathered at the codes that it was at, and now if we do a certain amount of renovation, we have to bring it up to the current code. Right now, it says the local share is 81 million. That's actually going to be less. That was, that was as of that morning. The MSBA did vote to increase their reimbursement rate, which I'll get to in a minute. I talked a little about the timing, long-term capital planning, just trying to make sure that we understand that, you know, the elementary school and the, and the high school, although we like to, you know, everyone likes to call it the new high school, the new high school is 23 years old, right? So it's almost like this is sort of the time, I think this is a good time, as those projects exit the tax rolls, to sort of look at how to address the middle school, and then hopefully by the time that the high school and the elementary school needs significant attention, that middle school project could be paid off. I just talked a little about the cost of construction and how it's, it's going up, and although it's been unfortunate that it's rapidly gone up, that it's, you know, I don't think it's ever going to go down. You know, there's, there aren't many trend lines of construction that ever have a dip in them. It is funny, when you look at this, I actually had Mr. Ngano help me with the cost of construction, you know, when you look and say that the, the, the old high school was, was built for, in 1961, for 2.25 million. So it shows you how things have changed. I looked a little about tax impact stuff. You know, Clinton's rank is currently 246th in terms of our single-family tax bill, meaning there's basically of the 351 communities in the state, there's 245 that have a higher tax bill than us, and about 100, and it will be left there, about 100 that have less. So what would that be? The average assessed house is $369,000, and then I did a calculation there of what a tax impact would be, but we're going to skip that because I'm going to give you a more updated one. I talked a little about community benefits in terms of, you know, the improved educational opportunities for students, the enhanced safety features for students, the idea that improved educational outcomes can attract more people to an area. So when we talked about that with the Chamber of Commerce, it was about, you know, not just you're attracting, you know, you're attracting, hopefully, schools are helping to train your future employees, but they're also attracting your customer base and, and your current employees, if you need to recruit, that they want to come to somewhere that has a, a good school system. School choice, there's a boost in school choice of the new school, and it's, overall, it's an investment in the community and to the pride of Clinton, just like the downtown project. So as I was giving that speech, the MSBA was also having a meeting, or right around the same time. same time, and they voted to increase their construction cap. Because you know, it's one of the things we talked about, our reimbursement rate is in the low 70s, or probably the net effective one will be in the low 70s, sorry, net reimbursement rate will be in the low 70s. But that's capped, right? So our effective reimbursement rate was really less than, less than half of the project before because it was capping construction at $393 a square foot, when the true cost of construction right now is closer to 1,000. Well, at their meeting, they upped that cap to $550 a square foot. And there's an additional $55 per square foot for site work, which also factors in there. So in the MSBA's eyes, they're now at $605 for their reimbursement rate per square foot, which is a lot closer to the actual than it was, say, a year ago. Because even this 393 was, was an increase relatively recent. You haven't really seen the MSBA give these large increases. It's, I think they've gotten some pressure and some funding from the state to allow them to try to keep moving forward even though construction costs have gone up. So I do have a revised tax impact sheet here. Current assessed value of a house in Clinton is $369,923. And I should note, when people hear that, remember your assessed value is not necessarily the market value of your house. So you want to try to make sure you look at your tax bill. Because there are people that might say like, oh, the neighbor's house next to me just sold for $500,000. Well, it doesn't mean your house is valued at $500,000, assessed at $500,000. You want to look at what your assessed value is if you're trying to figure this calculation out for yourself. Our current residential tax rate is 13, 13.37, so there's a property tax right now of 4,009,4587. If you borrowed $70 million, which is with the new increased cap, that's about what the borrowing would be expected to be, 70 million. The rate for that capital debt exclusion would be 1.99, which means the additional debt exclusion you would see is about $736 a year. And I tried to break that down to get to the point where, you know, a month, it's 60 bucks a month, a week, it's $14, a day, it's $2. I like the week, I feel like the week, it's like one, like just you skip one large pizza somewhere along the line or something like that, and you can, you can make it up. Daily, I mean, asking people to skip a coffee a day, that's a... But the, like I said, that's like half a coffee if you go to Dunkin', it's two if you go to Combi's. But the, so that's, that's about where I was. I just wanted to give you guys that update, and I know I did share figures. So with the chamber, so I want to make sure I shared those similar figures with you guys, and these are updated. And I also already talked to Town Administrator Ward about hopefully getting to talk, speak to the selectmen kind of at the end of the month, probably like the 29th or so, and kind of share some similar updates with them as well, just so that we can start trying to get, you know, what we feel is the, the correct factual information out there. And then the last thing I have is a summer boost program. So in your file, in your packet, there's file IKE, which is on promotion and retention of students. And it basically gives the, it basically gives the principal the ability to sort of set the promotion requirements. Trying to find the right... All right. So the, the principal can direct and aid teachers in their evaluation review for grade assignments, and then students are normally personally graded grade exceptionally made within judgment of the professional staff, exceptions in the best interest of the student involved. So basically, I don't think anything we're proposing on the next page is, is different than this policy, right? Because this policy sort of grants that authority to the principals and the professional staff. So what we're looking at is a CMS, CHS summer boost program. So we sort of piloted this a little bit last year. It was more of a voluntary basis where we looked at certain students and said, we think it would, it would benefit you if you did this program. And some of those students, I think a couple of the students did, I forget how many, three. And what we'd like to do this year is actually kind of make this mandatory so that any students who meet these, these categories, so basically if they failed two or more of the following courses, basically their four cores, so if they failed two or more four cores and have been chronically absent and/or have had disciplinary infractions that severely impacted their education, then those students would be referred to the summer boost program. And essentially, what we would be doing is we'd be setting that this two-week program over the summer would sort of be a condition for them to get promoted so that we could try to, to go to the high school. So the idea is we want to make sure students are aware of this now, and we wanted to make sure that we are, because there's still ample time for students to recover from any of those right now. We just finished up the first quarter of the year, and I didn't want to start kind of sending this out without running it by the school committee, so if you guys have questions, you know what it is. And you understand, our goal is that really by doing this, it's hoping that students will understand that there is sort of a benchmark that they have to meet to really be able to go over to the high school, and that if they don't, they are going to have to kind of go to the summer program in order to transition. So we're not trying to really hold kids back, but we are hoping that this will maybe help our, some of our eighth-grade students to remain focused during their eighth-grade year. And, and for those who don't, or for those who struggle, it will offer sort of this bridge program to hopefully maybe kind of get them set up to better succeed when they come to high school. So I guess I don't think I need a formal vote on this because I think in the policy, it gives us the authority to set the procedures. I just wanted to share it in case there are any questions or concerns with this before we start making sure that all of our parents are aware of it.
Questions?
I think that's all I had.
Anything from curriculum?
We have the next meeting on December 6th.
Safety, the townway meeting, is that?
Yeah, that's the one that I think Mike Ward's trying to coordinate it, I think, because now it's, it's not set up yet. So we're waiting on that. So once we have that, I'll get that out there.
All right. Anything from the other committees, marketing, policy, or facilities? Negotiations were good?
Yep.
All right. Joe, do you want to handle this here later?
It's up to you.
Go ahead, if you want.
Okay. So under school committee composition, this is my last official meeting as a school committee member on this board. It, I've given notice to the Chair of the Select Board and Chair Bailey, Superintendent Meyer, and have a letter for our Town Clerk Sergeant. It has been a privilege to serve the town of Clinton, but I'm at a point now with my principalship where I just feel like I can't do the work that I need to do there and serve this board in the, in the way that I would need to, that, that anyone who has this position, the honor of this position, would need to. So while I wish I could finish out my term, I just feel like I have to devote the time that I have to, to the position that I have. I want to thank my fellow school committee members, past and present. It, it is, again, an honor to serve in this capacity. My thanks also to Mr. Ngano and especially to Dr. Meyer. Clinton Public Schools is, is, is moving forward in, in positive and productive ways, and I'm grateful to have had the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Well, so obviously, we were light a couple of members tonight, so we would like to, we'll probably reach out, but we'll formally invite you to the December school committee member meeting for the recognition portion.
Oh, no, that's, we'll be here one way or another.
Thank you, Joe. Anything under old business? New business? Let's have a couple of things. One, I, I saw on the website, so if somebody can correct me if I get anything wrong here, but those sign-ups for the winter sports is, is out there now, right? Are they correct?
Yep.
So I didn't sign, I signed up yet, but I did see it out there today. Jan kind of brought it up, I want to congratulate all the, the fall sports. I'm not going to name them all, because I know I'll leave one out, and I don't mean to. So I'm going to say all of them that are, that are continuing on and some, and those that didn't continue on, that, you know, they, they still had a great year, just because you don't make the playoffs, doesn't mean, you know, you didn't try hard. But to those that are going on, you've had a great year. And again, I'm not, I'm going to forget what I did. I've been done up bad things.
I will say to that end, the athletic director has done a phenomenal job in keeping the community aware, just through Facebook, through, through other means. I feel pretty informed when it, when it comes to all the progress that all of our student athletes have had.
He has been really good. And I don't want to embarrass Joe, but congratulations to him.
No, no, no.
He led the golf team. And lastly, I just want to thank, last Friday, the Clinton football team honored the veterans before the game. And Joe brought it up, you know, he started off getting in touch with Smitty and Justin Ball, the football coach, and Dr. Meyer was great, and the high school, all the staff, and the boosters and the PTA. Thank you for your patience, as I was trying to figure out how to post that, I couldn't do it. I, I knew I wasn't, I, I didn't know what I was going to end up putting out there, so it was better just to leave it alone. But everyone that was involved in it, and the veteran, the American Legion had, had their commander up there. Smitty, he contacted me, and he, for those that don't know, Corporal Curtis Backhill, who was a 2003 graduate, I think, of Clinton High, passed away earlier this year, and Smitty kept the idea of having his mother and his sister, actually flipped the coin, and he made these hoodies for them that had his name and his, I think it was his football, high school football number on there. But it really, I talked to the sister afterward, and it really meant the world to them. So I know, again, if I left somebody out that was involved in that, but especially in even, you know, the students, the way they, they received it, and the student body's been great through all, all the playoffs. But it really meant a lot to the veterans that were up there, and it was, it was a great night, so thank you. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.